Good morning, and Director Richmond's on his way, and we'd like to welcome Laurie.
Pretty normal.
Yes, and alternate from Squamish. Thank you all for being here. I've called the meeting in order at nine oh one. We would like to recognize that this meeting, we are on the traditional territory of the Statlium people, the Lilawat Nation. Our regional district was committed to positive communications and relationships with all of Indigenous nations' neighbors. Which is thank you from all of us to all of you. I motion to approve the agenda, please. The Rainbow, second to body of first of all. Now we're going to the regional moment, District of Squamish. I'll turn it over to you, Jen.
Thank you.
Oh, call question for the agenda. Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. Thank you. Jen.
Thank you. And highlighting in the regional moment for Squamish this time around, we wanted to touch base and just elevate the opening of Foundry Cedar Sky in Squamish, which happened in April. It officially opened. So just a few really quick high-level stats on teen mental health and substance abuse. There are some really, really heartacheingly eye-opening statistics that are coming out around how challenged our youth are in today's nation. So just some high-level stats. Clinical depression more than doubled for teens and youth and young adults between 2011 and 2021. According to the CDC, so this is an American stat, but I think it does apply here in Canada. Nearly twenty-five percent of teenage girls made suicide plans in 2021. It's like really hard getting numbers. And specifically to the Cedar Sky corridor in advance of Foundry Cedar Sky opening, there was, Cedar Sky Community Services did some research and they found that nearly fifty percent of youth in our corridor didn't know where to turn when they needed to, didn't know where to turn to, who to turn to or where to turn to when they needed help. And so that's why I think this opening of Foundry Cedar Sky is so amazing. It's a, it's a service, a building, a wraparound services that provide young people ages twelve to twenty-four and their families free and confidential services to fit their unique needs for mental health and substance abuse. And it's meant to support those in Squamish as well as through the corridor. Cedar Sky Community Services is the lead agency, but it really is a community-based collaborative project that VCH, Ministry of Children and Family Development, District of Squamish, Division of Family Practices, Options for Sexual Health, Squamish Nation, School Districts, Squamish Littletree Regional District have all been supportive of this project. And it really is an amazing project for our community and rural region. They are providing online mental health support as well. So for those who are not able to actually physically make it to the program, to the building, they actually have online support services as well. There's a few pieces that I also think are worth highlighting that are really unique. So the first is that, so the land that the Foundry building was built on, also it was donated by the District of Squamish, but encompassed in that same building, Cedar Sky Community Services in partnership with BC Housing and the district, were able to build seventy-six units of affordable rental onsite, as well as it's the new location for our youth hub. So it has clinical services through Foundry BC, but it also has those kind of softer, more wraparound services somewhere where youth can just go and hang out. And it's a really, really beautiful building if you're ever in Squamish and get a chance to see it. And the other pieces that the folks who were leading the project really were inspirational in consulting early and closely with Squamish Nation, especially the community leaders to plan the carving of a cedar totem pole to welcome indigenous and non-indigenous youth into the building. And I brought a book that really just documents the whole story of how that totem pole was gifted to the community. It was Art Harry Seopton who led the project of carving the pole. And they did it through the youth hub programming. They had, I think it was about a dozen youths who came and learned how to carve a totem pole from a Squamish Nation elder. And so this is a really beautiful book. I'll pass it around if you have time at lunch to read through it. It's not very long, but it tells the story of who was involved and why it's so meaningful to the community. So that was the story that I wanted to share from Squamish. Now we get back. Happy to answer any questions?
That's lovely. Thank you.
Where, where position is it?
It's right behind the high school. So it's like walking distance from the high school, which is really great, but basically right downtown Squamish, just tucked in behind the high school.
Good location.
Yeah. It is where the old youth hub used to be, but the old youth hub was the old RCMP building and it was derelict. There was actually so much, so many plumbing issues that at the start of the pandemic, we actually had to like close it down. They were still using it operationally, but it was like unsafe and unfit. So during the pandemic, we had to shut it down and all of our youth service programming was moved to dynamic locations during the early stage of the pandemic. It was all online, obviously. But then our youth programmers were really, really fantastic in delivering programs in really unique spaces. They did youth programming in the park and youth programming basically wherever they could find space and new facility was built.
The mayor and Director Rainbow.
Just curious, does it have a commercial kitchen that has, you've got how to cook?
Yeah, it doesn't have a full-size commercial kitchen, but it does have a kitchen. It has these pool rolling doors, so you can make the space bigger or smaller depending. And so they do have, they definitely have cooking program associated with these center.
Yeah, I was, I was involved with the Boys and Girls Club in Williams Lake as a director and very similar services that they had too. And it's pretty great to see for Squamish. Do they have, you know, Williams Lake, we started a rocket program for, for youth at risk. So on that end of it, are there programs for getting outdoors and getting people outdoors?
Yeah, that was one of the other really cool partnerships that came into play as one of our local contractors companies did, a few of them came together and did a building day and they all built unique things for some of our different nonprofit. One of them built the shed for the youth center, so they actually have some outdoor storage. And so they have some bike spending with that and they definitely connect in with our Squamish Offroad Cycling Association and other folks to get them outdoors.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Director Rainbow.
Just want to pick up on what Sal was asking about the kitchen that, that, that we, we were, we, the SLRD, and we were, we were approached to provide some funding. And my response to them was, rather than just give you some money, we would like to be identified with a particular part of the project. And what we ended up with was deciding the funding of the kitchen. And with a hundred and forty thousand bucks, it came from the southern built funds. So Karen was the mayor at the time, so I went on that. And they were going to call it, they, they asked, should we call it the District of Squamish SLRD Kitchen or the SLRD District of Squamish Kitchen? We said, Karen said, I think that's horrible. And came up with the idea of suggesting to them that they went to the nation and said, you choose a name. And I think that was the thing that prompted them to, to really choose First Nations names for various parts. Ours is the, it's a bear. I know the symbol is a bear. I'm not quite sure what the name is. I missed the opening because I was away and Jay's going to give me a tour at some point. But I, I think one of the, the other really positive things about this center is that the way it's designed and the sort of programming they're thinking of it is to attract all youth and not, not be a place where, you know, where, where kids think, oh, it's just for losers. Sometimes those kinds of facilities, they get that kind of a reputation. And then a lot of kids won't go because they don't want to be associated with them. So I think that they have a very positive approach and I, I, I'm quite optimistic about that. And I really appreciate the fact that it isn't just for people living in Squamish. It's, it's looking at a regional approach. Yeah, thank you.
Well done. Welcome back to Director Richmond. We have item five, item five point one. Do we receive the regional moment? Thank you, just thank you. And I'll turn it over to our CAO for verbal update. Oh, excuse me. We don't, I don't think we have any clothes, correct?
Okay, just checking.
Oh, that's a good thing that we don't. I'm not ready for any clothes reading. Okay, CAO Dalton.
Nothing is moving here. Thank you.
Now we're moving on to welcome Jeanette and item five point two, information report on the SLRD Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation. We had a welcome. Thank you.
So I'll just introduce Jeanette's work if I might, Chair. Yeah. So as you would have seen with the, the very comprehensive report in the package, the, the intent of this engagement this morning is to facilitate a board discussion on Indigenous relations. And this is flowing out of the one, two December strap planning work that the board did where they identified this as an item that they wanted to come to committee the whole. So that everybody could, could share the same common history of, of what has been done here at the SLRD, sort of current context, benefit from Jeanette's experience on this file for a number of years, and start the board thinking about what, if any, direction and guidance they want to give to staff going forward. The expectation today is not to come out with a list of five things that, that immediately need to be actioned, but we're happy to take any direction of the board. This is really just to start the conversation and just see where, where, where it goes from there.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I feel like my chair is a little small. It's all fine. So I just, I guess I wanted to start by thanking the board and also just acknowledging the previous boards as well who have made Indigenous relations and reconciliation a prior priority since 2015. I started working here in 2012. And for those of you who have been around that long, and, and I think some of you have, are, oh, thank you.
My phone's looking back too.
This is going to be great. Yes. Thank you, Director Rainbow. So yeah, so I started working at the SLRD in 2012. And we, we came to Indigenous relations in, in kind of a, I won't say an odd way, but in, in Electoral's area A and B, there was a real desire to focus on economic development. And we had applied for an economic development grant and got the grant. And I was the grants writer at the time. And I distinctly remember going to my CAO at the time and saying, well, we've got this economic development grant. So who do I pass this file off to? And she said, oh, well, we don't have anybody doing economic development. So I think you should do it. So that was when communications and grants became communication with grants and economic development. And then from there, when we started exploring what economic development in the Northern SLRD meant, we learned very quickly that we can't do economic development without engaging with First Nations. And in my, that, it seemed that that had been the first sort of foray into Indigenous relations that the SLRD had done. And so we approached the Northern Statlium and invited them to work with us on a regional economic development collaborative. And there was interest expressed, but we were told in no uncertain terms that we needed to learn more about Statlium and build the relationship and build trust before there was interest in, in working together on economic development. And so that was the first, that led to the first community-to-community forum that we did. And that was in 2016, in January 2016. And we collaborated with the District of Lilawat and the Lilawat Tribal Council on delivering that forum. And was there anybody here that was there? It was a really powerful event. But for me, it, it, it really shifted a lot of things for me to learn from Statlium about what economic development meant to Statlium, but also what Statlium title meant. And it, it caused me to realize that how I was coming into the relationship was, I, I really didn't know very much. And so that started a learning journey for me. And so I, I guess I just wanted to start by acknowledging that because I still have so much to learn and I still make a ton of mistakes. But if it hadn't been for that prioritization back then, I, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I feel like this is really important work. So thank you very much for taking the time to read the report and to listen to me today. Originally, I was actually planning on going through the whole report and then like one minute before the meeting, meeting started.
Three, three minutes.
Three minutes before the meeting started, Craig came into my office and said, I don't think you should go through the report. Just let the report speak for itself and we'll just get right to the SWOT analysis and the questions. And I was like, oh. I spent like several hours like preparing it. But anyways, it's all fine. I mean, he, he's right in that the report does sort of speak for itself. And I do want this to be a discussion about, about the report and if you have questions and stuff. But there were a few things that I just sort of wanted to flag. I mean, you'll note from the, you know, I, I went through a list of all the highlights of the work that we've done. A lot of that, we've done a lot of work. And a lot of that work has been sort of external focused. So building relationships, holding meetings, convening committees. And I think all of that stuff is really important. But there's, there's some gaps probably on the internal focus that we, that we should probably look at, in my opinion. But I did want to just kind of go through some of the background because, you know, I wrote this paragraph about how the SLRD was established in nineteen sixty-eight. And all regional districts were established in the late sixties. And when I was preparing this report, I started doing some research into why regional districts came to be, because it's actually a fairly unique governance structure in Canada. Only British Columbia has it. And I learned quite a bit, but one thing, I, I read several reports and I didn't see a single, nothing was written about First Nations in any of the reports that I, that I read about the formation of regional districts. I'm quite certain they were not consulted. And when you think about the purpose of what a regional district is, I mean, they were created after many years of debate, probably after World War Two. Population expanded. Urbanization was happening. People were moving out of the cities and into rural areas. And there was very little regulation. So regional districts were created as a way to deal with this rapid expansion. And, you know, developing land use policies and solid waste management and all that sort of stuff was, was a big part of why regional districts were created. But when I think back to the late nineteen sixties, I was born in nineteen seventy, so this is like an intellectual exercise for me. But sixty scoop, we've heard of the sixty scoop. There was, I think, eighteen Indian residential schools operating in British Columbia at that time. There was three Indian hospitals. Colonization was alive and well in the late sixties when regional districts were created. And I just wanted to have to offer that as some context. Because I remember one of the very first meetings that I had with one of the Northern Statlium chiefs. And I was quite excited to be there. I wanted to help. And I think that's something that a, a lot of people want to do. And so I went in there that I, I had a lot to offer. And he was very respectful, but also very direct. And he basically told me that, he said, well, why should I, why should I care? Like, who, who are you and what is the SLRD? We don't actually consider it to be a legitimate government. And that really, it hurt me. I was like, what? Like, this is my, this is my career. This is the organization I work for and we're doing meaningful, important work. Now this is all my inside voice. I didn't say any of that to him. But again, that was one of those statements that really landed on me. So that's the reason why I wrote that paragraph about when and why the regional district was created. Because I feel like that is important context for this discussion. Again, there was, I included a primer on Aboriginal title and rights. I feel like that's something that we, we're probably all learning about. It's an evolving topic. You know, five, five years after the regional district was created was the Calder decision. That was the very first time that this, this Supreme Court of Canada actually recognized that Aboriginal title might actually be a thing. And it was, it was a rather weak ruling, but then over time, the courts began to define it more and more. To the point back in 2014 where the Chilkoteen actually were able to prove title on a portion of their territory. So there's a lot to know and there's a lot to learn and it is evolving, but it's something that we need to be aware of in our relationships. So Truth and Reconciliation Commission happened in 2015. And shortly after that report was created was when the SLRD board at the time established Indigenous relations as a priority. And in 2016, after receiving a, a report somewhat similar to this, it was a little more focused on the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. The board had made a resolution to become a regional district of reconciliation and to work towards turning those words into actions. So since that time, we have been working towards that. And I think that, you know, like I said, we've done a lot of really good stuff. And there's a lot more that we could be doing. So I think with that, I will just start talking through the Indigenous Relations function and maybe talking a little bit about the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats. And I, I guess I'm not sure if I should just like read what I wrote in the report or we can just talk about it as a, as a group. I can be available if people have questions. Yeah.
Really up to the, up to the, the board chair, how you'd like to?
Do people, first of all, maybe have questions about the report in particular? And then, and then we could just start working on the SWOT as you suggested. And I don't know that we necessarily have to go in such a formal way. Director Matt, yeah?
I'd just like to say that you've done a wonderful job.
Yes.
Because I've been here for a little while now and participated in some of those events, shall we say. And I think so with COVID happening, we've, we've lost three years of continuity. And we need to pick up where we left off. The times that we did get together with, you know, the different groups, I think were very, very valuable. We, we, we accomplished a lot to start with. And, and I'm sure that there's, as there is here, there's new people on this board. I'm sure there's new members of their councils and such, new chiefs. So we need to get that going again so that people know who they're talking to and whatnot. Because I think that's really important. Anyways, good on you for everything you've done because it's been really good.
I appreciate that. Could I, could I just speak to that? Because there are some things in process. So Director Matt, you, were you within any of the Northern forms or are you referring, okay? So with, we have two sort of parallel processes, one with Northern Statlium and the District of Lilawat. And then one with Southern Statlium and Village of Pemberton. And recently, well, in September, we did hold a, a, quite a small New Quintual Regional Gathering. And again, this was sort of a post-COVID thing and it had been canceled and rescheduled a number of times. And so it was quite a small gathering, but we did have, it was, it was a pretty powerful day. And a report came out of that. And now the organizing committee has continued to meet. So Village of Pemberton and Lewat Nation and the SLRD met three weeks ago or so. And there is talk of, of, there's an interest in organizing another gathering. At this point, we don't know exactly when that's going to be. Lewat Nation does have elections happening on July fifteenth, so there will be new people there. But we, we, we definitely acknowledge that there's a need to sort of do a relationship building and that sort of thing. And similar in the North, we held a meeting with the intergovernmental advisor of the LTC, Jim MacArthur. And CAO Deniger and myself had a meeting a few weeks ago. And District of Lilawat actually has submitted a community-to-community forum application. I'm, I'm not sure if it's been awarded, but I, I expect that it will be. And so the hope with the Northern Gathering is it'll take place sometime in September. Did you have a question or?
Oh, no, I was just, as soon as you're finished, I was going to speak to that.
Okay, perfect. Great. Yeah, so, so that will be sort of a relationship building focus, introducing new people. There's hope that there can be a little bit of priority setting happening at that meeting because there was a community-to-community forum meeting in the North back in 2019 and some priorities had been established. So we're looking at that and, and seeing if those are still the same priorities and where do we go from there? And then the other topic of interest in the North is the Statlium Cultural Center. And trying to get some traction on that. So District of Lilawat applied for one C to C grant and then Lilawat Tribal Council actually applied for a second one. And just on that note, the C to C program has actually changed considerably this year, which is very good news. And it's something that the SLRD I know had been advocating for and probably other governments as well. Because reconciliation and Indigenous relations is, it's a complex field. It takes a lot of time and effort and money to do these sorts of things. So they've actually increased the maximum amount of funding from five thousand to ten thousand to hold the gatherings. But they've also created a new stream of funding. So you can apply for an additional ten thousand dollars to actually do some stuff, do priority setting, action planning. So we could hire a consultant to actually help us create an action plan. And then the other thing that the ten thousand dollars could be put towards is a review, a joint review of, say, SLRD board policies and that sort of thing through a colonial lens or through an Indigenous lens to see, you know, if there's things that could be changed. So there is, there's new funding available for that type of work. So it's, it's really good news. And then the other thing that they did change, we used to be scrambling because you used to have to apply for the grant and then the, the gathering and all the reporting and everything had to be completed by the following March thirty-first. And now they've changed that where you actually have one year from the award of the funding to actually complete everything. So we have a lot more flexibility now.
That's good. Yep, Laurie.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to say that the application for the twenty- Yeah, so I just wanted to, to say that the application for the 2023, 2024 C to C. Was just approved at our, our last council meeting. And that the district will provide the overall grant management. And my understanding is that the C to C will take place in the fall or early spring. So just because it's already, and, you know, end of May, June, by the time we get it in, who knows? To, to say that it would be in September, I don't think it'll be. So, and I know that it will involve the Stoughton Tribal Papaclea and obviously Jeff Carter as well.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you for that. I, it's funny what, because when September was the. Sort of the month and I was thinking, oh, UBCM is that month? When are you gonna squeeze that in? But yeah.
At the last meeting, we were talking about fall or early spring. Just because it takes a long time to get everybody kind of.
It does. And that's just one of the things too, like. This isn't something, like, we're, we're trying, everything that we do, we're trying to do collaboratively.
Absolutely.
So holding organizing committee meetings with the Stoughton, with District of Lilwet, with SLRD. So that we can co-create the agenda, co-create the, the process. And, and it takes time to do it that way.
It really does. And, and also, you know, taken into consideration. You know, November, December, January and February, those travel months, they can be brutal.
Director Denary, yeah?
Thank you for the report. It's really, really good. And like Director Rack said, you've done a wonderful job. So I, I've got a couple of questions and one for the. For the southern C to C. Area D. Is not incorporated within one. And, and you mentioned that you really haven't had a C to C with the Squamish Nation? Yet?
No.
And the other thing that I saw in there that the three very southern. Stoughton nations aren't in the SLRD. So where is Nekwakwa in it?
Right, so I'll maybe answer the, the second part first. Nekwakwa was. Part of the first two New Quintual Gatherings. We actually held the second gathering in Nekwakwa. And they were actively participating in the organizing process for those two gatherings. As was the Lower Stoughton Tribal Council. And the Community of Shamakwam. Actually participated in both of those gatherings as well and they did. Sign on to the terms of reference for the New Quintual Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And then as Director Mack said, you know. Well, I went away on personal leave. And there was a lot of balls in the air and we did the best that we could, but. The relationship sort of stalled and then all of a sudden COVID happened. And everything just stopped. And so it's taken some time to sort of. Get the New Quintual process back on track. We have tried to engage in Nekwakwa and Shamakwam in particular. But Hacha and Skatine have also been invited to participate. And. I think capacity is a challenge. And then I also think. You know, the reality is that we did, we, we started something and we got some momentum and then it stalled and I think we, we have a little bit of work to do to build some trust back. Because capacity is so stretched, we have to sort of demonstrate that it's going to be worth their time to participate. And hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to, to have their participation. I do know. We, we participate also on the Pemberton Area Economic Development Collaborative. And that's sort of more of an economic development, community development focus. And Hacha and Nekwakwa have been participating on that, at that table. Although not every meeting. As with Lewat Nation as well. So Lewat has been stalwart support of, of New Quintual and continues to be. And yeah, I think hopefully as the process continues, we'll, we'll get some more, some more buy-in. And as for the Squamish Nation. Yeah, it's interesting. So back in 2006, the SLRD actually did sign a protocol agreement with Squamish Nation. We have one with Lewat Nation from 2006 as well. But as far as I know, that's, that's where it ended. I've done lots of digging in our files and I haven't seen. Any other meetings scheduled. And again, I think. It's, I remember, so when we were first starting to talk about C to C forums, there was an interest at the board table about having a regional. C to C and bringing Squamish and Lewat and Stoughton together. And that would be nice from our perspective because then everybody would be together, but the reality is there's. Complex relationships amongst the nations as well that we have to be sensitive to. And so I think we have to really consider what our objectives are. And so right now we're just focusing on trying to build relationships as we can. I mean, I'm, I'm one person working part-time. And we can only do so much. So I think there's been some hesitancy to sort of open up another. Relationship that we may not be able to deliver. Sufficiently. But that being said, Squamish Nation just recently released their strategic plan for 2023 to 2026. And they have identified external relations as a key priority. And their goal, one of their objectives over the next three years. Is to renew or establish relationship agreements with all local governments in their territory. So it is a priority for Squamish Nation clearly to have relationships with. The SLRD District of Squamish. I believe District of Squamish and Squamish Nation are already doing a lot together. Which is great. And we're actually trying to piggyback on that a little bit, so. District of Squamish has initiated Squamish Nation Territory Network Meeting. And it's a quarterly meeting and we participate in those calls and it's. Village of Gibson's and anybody that's. Any local government that's on Squamish Nation territory is invited to the calls and we just exchange information and ideas and sort of talk about what we're up to and it's, it's been really helpful. But as far as reaching out and actually asking for a meeting, that hasn't happened. But one other point to note is. Sheldon Tetrel, who was the facilitator that we hired to help us with. The 2017, 18 and 2022 New Quintual Forums. Is now the CAO at Squamish Nation. So we have an in at the staff level with, with Squamish Nation now, so. You know, may, maybe that's something that we could look at in the future.
And I wouldn't call it a piggybacking. My, my strategy right now is to try and be there or jump on or participate in any opportunity that I see that comes along. I had Director Richmond and then Director Stone.
So I'm not sure. I think we're just general conversations, SWAT. I'm not sure. So hopefully these comments are well placed, but. I think Jeanette's explanation of how we lost in the United States is really accurate. I think you're totally right in that we have to. Regaining momentum is not just picking up where we left off. It's not going to work that way for a number of reasons and the main reason. I think across the country, but I will definitely say locally, or I feel confident saying locally, we're at a point in time now where. I feel First Nations, I know Lewat Nation wants to see. It's going to be an obvious statement, more concrete action. And I think that comes in around undrip and it comes in around adopting. And helping change, adopting legislation locally and changing legislation around the province and country and being more active in that, so. I was always very proud of our relationship with Lewat Nation. I thought we were, you know. I, I, I've got some strong personal relationships that go back well before. I was in politics, the chief was in politics. I was so good about that. We were one of the first to sign protocol agreements. Our New Quintual. Gatherings early and when those things were starting were very positive. And we did gain some good momentum. We're currently in our OCP review process, as I've mentioned before. Obviously a big component is the referral to Lewat Nation. And. It's opened my eyes again to, okay, Mike, you're not where you thought you were and, and. The sense, the feeling, the message I'm getting is, okay, if we're going to move forward on things like your OCP, if we're going to. Re-ignite New Quintual and have meaningful gatherings, we're past the point of, of, of just getting together and starting the process. We want to see real action. We would like to see you. Take concrete steps towards adopting undrip. Towards helping us change what the Indian Act currently dictates, et cetera, et cetera, those things that we all know. And we all know, I think in this room, having been around for a few years, that adopting undrip is not an easy nut to crack. There's a whole bunch of legislation. Around it that's, we need support and we local governments need support on to understand and how we're going to do it. So. I just think it's really important to, to note that, that we're at a point in time now where it's. We're beyond relationship building. Our, our protocol agreement has now. You know, come, come into question and we're being told it's time to renew it. It's time to renew again. When we were, when we first started, we were very proud of ourselves, but it's so outdated. And what they want to see, what Lewat Nation wants to see now in terms of the next steps is not represented in our current protocol. So I think to rebuild O'Nolenton, which I think we're all very keen in this room, whether it be at South, or like all the different things we're talking about. We're going to have to take some substantive steps towards. Really understanding, undrip, really understanding how we incorporate it into the work we do here and. A little bit of that for now, but. I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, thanks. And I think my comments will go well on Director Richmond's. Thank you for the really great report and for all the work that you've done. But I think the piece that's jumped out at me the most, especially in the weaknesses, is the no formal training or professional development for this board and for staff. And I think that's, is what showcases in terms of where those starts and stops happen is when we rely on a single position. To carry through a lot of that relationship building. That's where. We really get challenged. And so I think that's one piece that jumped out at me reading the report and also having sat around this table for a handful of four years now, on and off. But not having really received any formal training with this group around. Our internal learning and what actions we can take. And I think Director Richmond's right, we're seeing. First Nations across the country take more ownership and more leadership and expect more of not just federal and provincial governments, which. They always have and should have expected more, but also local governments. And I think understanding that relationship. Between local governments and indigenous governments is a tricky one and one that we're all trying to figure out. But just going back to some comments on the Squamish Nation in particular, like. You're correct in that they are actually rethinking entirely how they're going to set up. Protocol agreements with their, with the, with the local governments that touch their territories and. And so I think taking guidance from them is really important and they are doing the due diligence around their table to make sure that is a. Clear process and is driven by the things that they want to see happen through those partnership and memorandum of understanding, so. I think we'll start to see more of that come out from the Squamish Nation in the coming year. They've been working hard on that. As you mentioned, it's in their strategic plan, which is also encouraging. But yeah, I think that's one of the biggest pieces that jumped out at me is like. I think this topic can often be challenging because we all want to take action. And yes, there are moving pieces and we have to do it collaboratively and sometimes that can take time, but there are things that we can do around this table and we need to get our own. Level of knowledge and understanding and education. To a certain level that we can then feel confident that we are bringing something to the table and not just asking for direction.
So, oh, yeah, yeah. There's both Jeanette and then CAO Dylan.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond and, and agree with what you've said about the training and just. I do, I, I understand that, I'm not sure, I think it might have actually been the previous board had allocated some funding to, to, to do some training. And so I know that Monica, the HR manager here, has been doing some research on that and I did include, there was a staff survey that went out. Not too long ago and I included some responses from that survey in the appendix here. And definitely there's a very strong interest. In taking some training and there, and there's obviously a need. But I, I also just wanted to flag that. I think, I, I don't know what the budget was. It was two or three thousand dollars. Which isn't a lot of money for training. And that was one of the things that I flagged as, as far as weaknesses is that when funding happens, it tends to be ad hoc or one-off. What we need is a training plan. So that onboarding happens every new hire. You know, there's so much to learn. You know. Colonization in Canada. The, the recent legal decisions, undrip, the TRC, the calls to action. Anti-racism. So to, and I know that's one of the things Monica's been struggling with because where do you, where do you start? If you only have this small amount of money and you have fifty people to train. What, what, what do you do? So, and I mean, it's definitely a great start to be able to do something and I think she's exploring sort of a more general. Two-hour workshop or something like that, which is, which is fantastic. But it's just a start. And if we had a line item in a budget where we had a training plan and it was funded every year and we could make sure that. Everybody was getting the appropriate training for their positions, that would be really great. So yeah, I just wanted to say that.
You, Dylan, yeah?
Thank you, Chair. So. This is really helpful. And I think from a staff perspective, what we're making forward, again, not today, but these types of comments are, are getting us in that direction. Are, are some priorities, direction and guidance from the board. This is, obviously it's important work, but it's also challenging work for the reasons that a number of, of directors have, have mentioned. Jeanette highlighted that and the report highlights that a lot of good work's been done here. A lot of good work and there's a lot of good relationships that exist and, and things to build on. I would also observe looking back at board strategic plans. That identified certain priorities and intent with respect to indigenous relations and those not necessarily being matched from a budgetary perspective or a plan. So great ideas. Sound intent, but, but that was not reflected in the budget or direction and there's no plan or framework. And so I would describe sort of where we're at as a bit of a random space. And as we move between now. And the fall and we're going through some strap planning work with the board, but the fall will be when we start to prioritize for the next three years. Just, just, just the notion of actually planning out for the next three years, what an indigenous relations plan might look like. And, and you all know and we all know, this is, this is a long-term work. It's something we have to be committed to. And when we. We have some time at the end, maybe Jeanette could speak to it. I can't recall if it was in the report, but the one regional district, regional district of Comox.
Comox Valley Regional District.
A very deliberate four-year plan to develop a plan. Like, that's how, you know, complex this is and important it is to actually ensure when you say something. You know what you're saying, you commit to it and you assign the resources to get it done. Because meeting every four years to say it's important and not doing that. Is, is counterproductive. And I'm not saying that's what the board has done at all at previous points, but there, there is a gap between, you know, like, like the, the UN Declaration. There, there's something concrete, meaningful that the Comox Valley Regional District used sort of as their guide to build their framework, how do they move towards that? So that. Something like that might, might be something for the board to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Watfield and then Director Rainbow. Yeah, and is this Jack, John Thornton has joined us online? Okay, yeah. Welcome, Jack.
I did.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, Jeanette, for your, your work on this because it was, it's really good. It's, and we need that. We need that. We need the reminder. I wanted to say on, just to talk a bit about the piece on education. I know that Interior Health. We had to do, and I believe it was an eight-hour. Video and it was an hour at a time and it just, you know, took you through. The whole part about, you know, right through colonization and right up to where we were. And that was probably about four years ago. So a lot has changed and it keeps revolving, but. I think that before we go to the next C to C. Being that we don't have a lot of money for education, that kind of a video or collaborating with Interior Health to find out because. We, we are constantly, you know, doing. Videos and training and to, to work together. And I think that Interior Health could be a, a big asset in that. And again, before we go to the, the C to C, I think that we should have a few of those videos available so we can do some education on our own. And I also think that. You know, in talking with a Stoughton before that C to C, what did they want us to know? You know, because it's, it's one thing I have learned, many things I've learned, but one thing I have learned is what I think. That we need to know or what I think we should do is not. That we need to know or what I think we should do is not. Right. It's what they want us to hear, what they want us to listen to, what they want us to learn. And I think that's an important piece. So, you know, even if we took that first hour at C to C and, you know. Uh, had some sort of video that they wanted us to learn, but I think in talking with them, that would be a good. Piece that we should consider.
But yeah, if I could just respond to that, and I believe I've actually taken that same training through the Provincial Health Services Authority, that eight hour webinar series. And it was fantastic. It really was. Um, has has anybody else here taken that?
Yeah.
Um, so Monica did look into that as a potential, but it's three hundred dollars per person. So our budget goes through the roof. Um, if 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 we, and it like if every staff person and every board member took that, we wouldn't have budget to do that. And then the other thing is it's eight hours is a big time commitment.
It is.
Um, so I think what we were looking at just in discussions with Monica was. You know, if we could find something that was maybe in the two or three hour range that. That was sort of like a mandatory thing that everybody had to do. And then making something like the Provincial Health Services Authority training. Um, available to people. And then the other thing too, I'm not sure, I know, um. The hub in Lillawatt had a decolonization workshop a few weeks ago and I don't know if you went. I I couldn't go because I was having car trouble. Did you go too?
Uh, we both did.
Okay, yeah, and, and so hopefully.
Two now.
Great. And hopefully we'll be able to continue to like to support those sorts of things. Um, and I know Stat Liam, like I've I've talked with a couple of Stat Liam folks about their interest in creating their own. Curriculum for training non indigenous folks, exactly what you said. This is what we we really need you to know.
Yes.
And and that was, you know, and that's, I think, one of the reasons why that twenty sixteen forum worked so well. We went in there thinking, let's talk about economic development and they're like, nope. Let's talk about residential schools. Let's talk about the doctrine of discovery and terranolus. And all of these things that have created this mess that we're in. And. Yeah, I mean, I think there was actually a table about economic development, but it was kind of like a. It was a much smaller focus of the event and and I think you're one hundred percent right, Mary. We have to. Get to that place where it's eighty percent, um, eighty percent listening and twenty percent talking.
Correct, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, okay, Jack, one second. We've got. I think Director Rainbow and then Sal and then Jack. That be all right? Yes. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Um, Jeanette, thank you very much for this. I think, um, and again, I just had my voice to. I think you've done a super job over the years with this, leading us and facilitating this. But why we've been talking, I was just thinking about my my own personal journey. And when I came here to this province in nineteen sixty eight. I worked in a little, uh, school on the on the shores of a lake and we had Indians at one end and Indians at the other end. That. You know, I use that term not because I think it's the right term, but that that's, that was the attitude at the time. And I quickly discovered that the the Cree on the reserve at one end of the lake weren't talking to the beaver at the other end of the lake. So that was my first introduction to, um. The the complexities, if you like. You you can't just treat First Nations people as all the same. So that was. Um, we we all know that. And I think. The the important thing for me in the years or where my learnings have occurred, if you like, is face to face encounters. We can sit around and maybe we can talk about what we would like to do, give other plans and I and I think we should, you know, but. We we also have to. Find ways, productive ways to actually sit down and. Work together, do something, do joint projects, find ways of, uh, working with, um. First Nations people on something that's meaningful for them and which also furthers our agenda. Uh, and that forum that we had, the first one we had, that first C to C, I I remember a couple of things from that. One is I remember one very angry man. Telling us, you have no right to be here and we don't recognize you at all and we don't, you know. Well, you know, because I I I'd worked in places where. That I hadn't encountered that attitude. So that was one surprise. And the the other thing that was extremely powerful for me, I was on a a table with, uh. Um, people that had attended residential schools. And at the end of the the day, one very big man stood up and and stuck his hand out. And I shook hands with him and he he actually was crying. And he said to me, I never thought I'd shake the hand of a white man. And it, and, you know, when when you have those kinds of, um. Encounters, it it sort of really brings home. What we're talking about, it's incredibly important. And you're only, we're only gonna move forward i- if we. Find ways of creating those face to face encounters. Um, and then one last thing, I think we we have, we have a thing going here at, um. Um, Seaton with that fire department. But I don't think we make enough fuss about that. I think we've got a really neat relationship, you know. No, we don't want to. So please stop me, you know, but, you know. That that's an example. When we talk about reconciliation. There's an example of a a a skill set, a service that that the First Nation can provide. That we need and and that. So i- i- in a way, it's different from the way things work most of the time. Most of the time, we're trying to provide things that. That we're providing all the service. So, you know, that that, um. And that wasn't the final thing. The final thing is that. We need to do the big things. At the the C to C forums and things like that, but we also need to take up and. Make sure we use every opportunity we can to do the little things, like that comment about the, um, the the foundry in in Squamish. About, uh, having the the naming. And turning that over to the the nation to to name various rooms and things like that. It's maybe it's a little thing, but it wasn't a little thing to them. You know, it was, it was, it was important. The the thing that the, um, the playground at Britannia. Um, we we've had that named. The 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 name came from the Squamish Nation. They gave us four suggestions and. The community voted for it and, um. So that playground is gonna have a First Nations name. They're little things, but they're important little things. So. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
And we're really pleased about the arrangement with La Shalath and the fire, but it's still a temporary and it's new staff coming in and they're. They're developing relationships and it's it's in progress, so. Um, I just say softly because I don't wanna say it's been, we're we're getting there.
I know, I know.
And so then I have. Director de Mayor, then Director Crumpton.
Yeah, I got a few comments to make and then a question. And I was involved with, uh. The Trail Committee of the B R V C A. And, uh, we approached. The Littlewood Travel Council on, uh. Management of Trails. And we finally, after four years, got, uh, signed M O U. On a partnership agreement where we would, uh, together, work together to. Manage the recreational trails in the upper British River Valley. I learned a lot through that process, uh, believe me. And, uh. One of the things that I learned was that each one of the bands. Were different. And they all wanted something different. And and, uh. Which which in a way causes an issue. Uh, for us. I mean, I worked with the Stadium Government Services on that. On that project, there'd been presentations to various band councils and. And to the Chiefs Council, the Lillawatt Travel Council and. And you definitely learn a lot. On on the interrelationships between each one of those communities. And, uh. In in the end, we we did manage to to have it and, uh. Un- unfortunately, uh, after after the by-election, I I wasn't to be able there to. Continue it and and move it forward another five years. But, uh. Could you speak to the differences between the bands and even between the the southern? Littlewood Travel Council and the Northern Littlewood Travel Council?
Um, yeah, so I did try to include a little bit of that in the report, just to sort of highlight the complexities that you mentioned. Um, so in nineteen eleven, the eleven Stat Liam communities got together at Spencer's Bridge. And signed the Declaration of the Lillawatt Tribe. Um, which was a declaration of their. Title and rights, basically. Um, and all eleven communities sign that. Um, but all eleven communities are independent and self governing communities. Um. Squamish Nation in nineteen twenty three, they had, I think they had. It was nineteen twenty three. I think they actually had twenty three communities as well. Maybe I'm ma- maybe I'm making that up, but there was several Squamish Nation communities and in nineteen twenty three. They had an election and. Their, the majority of their electorate voted to amalgamate into one nation and they created one government in nineteen twenty three. So Squamish Nation is one nation. Stat Liam Nation is not like that. They still have eleven distinct self governing communities. Um, all of which have their own interests and priorities and governance structures. Um. And because of this geo- geographical divide. Uh, in nineteen seventy five, the Lillawatt Tribal Council formed to provide a forum for the northern Stat Liam communities. And then I think it was sometime in the eighties that the Lower Stat Liam Tribal Council was established to provide a forum for govern- uh, for. Basically just communication amongst the bands in 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 the south. Um. Stat Liam Government Services was created following the B C Hydro Agreement. So Stat Liam for years had tried to, um, get the province to acknowledge. That their rights had been, uh. Recurbed. I'm not quite sure of the right word, but the the hydro facilities were built without any consultation or accommodation to the nation. And, uh, over many years of negotiation, uh, an agreement was struck that enabled. Uh, Stat Liam to receive a trust. Um. As accommodation for the B C Hydro infrastructure. And part of that money. Went to forming Stat Liam Government Services. They also formed an economic development arm called Stat Liam Eco Resources. Um, and in order to negotiate that settlement. Stat Liam, the eleven communities had to come together to form what they called the Stat Liam Authority. In order to, they needed one. Organization basically to negotiate with the province and B C Hydro. So they formed the Stat Liam Authority, which was the early beginnings of the Stat Liam Chiefs Council. Um, and all eleven communities are represented on the Stat Liam Chiefs Council. Um, so they have the Chiefs Council and then S G S. Um, manages, uh. Heritage, culture, education, various programs for the nation. Um, but not all communities, uh, like LeWatt Nation is not part of S G S. Um. And Stat Liam Eco Resources, I don't believe LeWatt Nation is a part of that either. So they do have a seat at the table at the Chiefs Council, but they don't. Uh, they're not part of the funding arrangements. Um, and then the Lower Stat Liam Tribal Council. To be honest, I know less about how that one works. I feel like the Lillawatt Tribal Council was created. And has actually quite a bit of resources and infrastructure behind it. So they've got. Like lots of staff positions and they're they're managing programs. Um, whereas the Lower Stat Liam Tribal Council has an administrator and I think one other staff person, so it's a much smaller organization. And it it does appear to be most mostly a forum for the bands to communicate and. Uh, work together on various things, but they don't offer specific programs per se, the way the Lillawatt Tribal Council does. Um, so it's complicated, you know, when when we, we're we're just trying to figure out now, like when we do referrals. Um. And, you know, I know, I had a question once because the the report says, uh, to. That referred to the appropriate First Nations and there was a question, well, can't we just name them? It's like, well, actually, not really, because depending on what the referral is, it's gonna go to different organizations. And, you know, can, if we send it to, if it's something in Area B, for example. Can we just send it to the Lillawatt Tribal Council or do all six of those communities need to be? Um, engaged with individually? And what about the Chiefs Council? Because they they handle title and rights. So this is. And S G S actually has somebody involved in in that as well. So it's. We're just figuring it out. Um, and I I had a call with B C Hydro a few weeks ago, actually, because I was like, I needed some guidance. And I thought they'd have all the answers and they don't either, you know, it's, we're, they, they, we're, you just have to. Be flexible and take your time and, you know, make some calls. It's not. You know, we have this, you know, sending an email and hoping that it's it's gonna land, but it's emailing and texting and calling and asking questions and. Figuring out who the right people to talk to and it's it's definitely not, uh, cut and dry.
Yeah, Jim MacArthur's the guy.
So Jim MacArthur, he's my guy.
Yeah.
And he's been, uh, seconded to a different role for probably up to two years. Uh, because they had, um, somebody in the health, I, Lori, do you know?
I don't.
Some somebody, it it's it's a health position in their health authority. Um, I think it's like executive director, like a big role, um, that he's now trying to do and also continue to do his role. So.
Thank you for explaining that, because I I think unless you understand that, how complex it is, it's really hard, uh. To to know what to do and and where to go and and what to do. You know, I learned through that whole process and, uh. Yeah, a- and then you throw in the ticket that, uh, in the pay ground so that. We're no longer part of the Littlewood Travel Council. Now they're all on their own. And and you can see some of the issues. And on the land side, uh, the Littlewood Tribal Council land, which was Matt Manuel, who's a pretty good friend of mine now. Um. You know, they, he he had the portfolio for forestry, so all the forest companies went to him with referrals. That went to all the six communities. Just taken away. And if you, and, um, so now the forest companies have to go to each community.
And Director.
Really complicated, thanks.
Sorry, Sal. Yeah, I just didn't want to forget about Jack. You there? Director Crumpton?
Okay, no forest issue.
All right, that's enough from you. Oh, there he is. Ah, yes, we can hear you, Jack.
Are you gonna say something?
Maybe I'll, I'll tune in when I'm in a better spot. Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Um, let's hear from Director Stoner while you're moving.
Just briefly, uh, just to fill on, um, amalgamation, it actually is the hundred year anniversary of amalgamation this year. So July, it will be a big celebration for Squamish Nation. Um, they have a full. Three weeks of activities planned between North Shore and there'll be some activities happening in Squamish. And July twenty thirty is actual. Amalgamation Day, um, and it was sixteen bands that were brought together.
July twenty third, you said?
July twenty third, but there's a whole, starting from July first, there's basically something, I can send the link around, but there's. Basically something at least every day or two for the entire month of July. Uh, from canoe races to cultural day at Alice Lake to the Amalgamation Day Festival, which will happen, uh, in Northland.
And participating in those things is just absolutely wonderful when you can do it. That's, yes. Uh, are you there, Jack?
He's driving.
Let me try one more time. How's it now?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I I've, thanks for the report. I really love how Jeanette's led, uh, over the last. However, many years we've been doing this work. I feel like we have looked to. The nations whose territory we're on to for leadership. And we've listened and I think New Quintual is a great example of how I perceive us moving forward, hosted by. The Lower Stat Liam Group and 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 very much an opportunity for us to. To listen and learn and, um. I I would love to do more of the same. One of the neat learnings I had from New Quintual was. Um, a member of Lilwatt saying to me, you know, we we. Often wanna come up with new. Things to do, new events to 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 create, but we have lots of. Um, festivals. Um, festivals and celebrations that we do every year that you're welcome to attend, and so that's what I've been doing. Since then is, you know, they, the Lil- the Lilwatt do, or not the Lilwatt, the Statlium do uh, Declaration Days in May when. All of those eleven um, tribes get together and celebrate when they went to the king and, and declared their independence and. Um, that I've always found that to be a very generous invitation to us, to attend their events, be a part of amalgamation. Days, be a part of what is already happening in their communities, so. I'm excited about this work, I think it's a, the best point for me is it needs to be resourced or it's not a. A, a real value of ours, and so I look forward to that budget conversation, um, but I am uh. Um, grateful for what's been done to this point, I think it's. Uh, we've, we've approached it in, in a good way, which I, I'd like to see us do more of. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Compton.
Yeah, and I agree, I worry a little bit that you're on a part-time basis carrying this massive load, incredible history and. Great work, but it's a lot for a part-time person, I do believe we should resource this at a higher level. Be some training, yep.
Can I maybe just uh, chair Bill, build on that with a couple of more questions and um. It, the, the conversation's really interesting and, and the, the relationship with our First Nation partners is, is layered and, and happens daily in different parts of the organization. Around regular work and, and, and planned events like Nupulatal and um. And so that's the environment that, that this relationship exists in, I, a couple of questions for the board as, as I think about. Priority setting, budgeting, resourcing, are things like what? What's the role of a regional district in this space versus the role of, of the municipal governments in the regional district? Um, and I think that, that's a common question for me and across number of service areas, but an interesting one perhaps for the board to think about. Um, as we'd like to get some direction on that at some point, and then what, what, um, what, and they've come out today and we've, we've heard. Um, people talking about training, leveraging the good activities that have been planned and conducted and building of those relationships, we've heard Undrip mentioned. Um, what are those things this board would like to continue? Uh, Mr. Compton said and build on, or perhaps is there something along the lines of an Undrip conversation? Or, or examination research at some point during its mandate, like tho- those are the questions that the board may wanna consider. Um, and that would help us if we, we, we sort of get some scope from the board at some point, that would help us develop. Um, perhaps some, some options for the board to consider as we get into that budgeting prioritization. Bit in the fall, and, and we may want to engage the board. Um, again, uh, Jeanette, in, in a second conversation here, the committee of the whole. Maybe towards the end of the summer after folks have had time to think and so, but I'm just throwing those observations out from the perspective of wanting. Us wanting to help you, to give us clear directions so we can um, we can get after whatever we should wanna get after.
I really like the suggestion.
Ah, yes, Jack, and I think I might have, oh, did I overlook you, Director Stoner? Okay. I'm overlooking you?
Um, I appreciate where the C L is directing this on, and I think a quick comment on. Our, our collective colonial approach, um, I find that we have off, we still. Tend to go to First Nations and say, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to learn? How do you want us to do it? And for sure, we're, uh, it comes from a place of being respectful and not wanting to step on toes and, and wanting to, to be careful. Um, but I think we need to take steps and, and, and still be careful. And not step on toes as we navigate that, but I, I, I. Again, I, I believe we're at a place in time where First Nations wanna see meaningful action coming from all levels of government and communities. Um, from us and, and again, carefully navigate it, so to build on, you know. To build on what the C O just said, I, I, I think for me personally. A training plan, a bud- a, a budget and a training plan that is, that is embedded in this organization, to me, that's gotta be a, a base step for sure. Let's make sure it's there so that everybody that walks in the door is a new employee or a new board member. Gets what they need to at least get the baseline understanding of where we're at, um. For me, one of the next steps I'd like to see, and I brought, I'm bringing this to, to our council in the next month or two, as a. Starting point, um, is again, better understanding how we can adopt. Undrip and, and what the, what the complexities of that is, and the, and the T R C calls to action. I think those thing, you know, if, those are the things we need to show that we're moving on and then we can ask more questions. About what else do you want us to do, how else should we move forward here, I think that will lead to renewed and stronger protocol agreements. I think that will lead to being able to action projects or joint thing, you know, together. Um, but yeah, that's what I would like to see is, is from a legal standpoint. Where, where are we as an organization, what can we do in terms of adopting Undrip and, and, and the T R C calls to action, um, you know, what? But is that at our disposables, at our disposal, so that's up to us to, to go out and find out, and, and I personally like a better understanding.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, build on that, uh, Director Richmond with like a training, a training plan. Um, and a resource library. Um, there's a number of resources that are really excellent, some of which I actually embedded in this report. Um, when you're talking about Undrip and the T R C. Um, calls to action, a, a group called Women Transforming Cities created a report. That just came out earlier this year, late last year, I can't remember, and it was basically about uh, local governments. And the T R C calls to action. And so they identified, I believe it was sixteen of the calls to action that were either. Specific to municipal governments or that worked for all levels of government, and then they sort of reviewed. What were the barriers to local governments taking action and what were the opportunities of actually. Of doing things, so um, that, there's a link to that report in. In the report that I shared, that I wrote, uh, I'm telling you what page it's on. But anyways, it, it's in there and I would encourage you all to look at that if you haven't already, um. And, you know, uh, U B C M has some excellent resources as well. Um, there, they did a webinar last fall on Undrip and the implications for local government. It was like about a ninety-minute long presentation, uh, it's available on their website, it's really, it's, it's quite, it's worth the time. To look at that, um, they brought in um, so a couple of people from the province to talk about um, Dripa. Uh, the Declaration of the, on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples Act, which now is law in British Columbia, and there's an action plan. That's part of Dripa, because the province now, because they have adopted Undrip, and so they've committed to making sure that all British Columbia legislation. Complies with Undrip, and that's a pretty tall order. Um, so they now have a Declaration Act Secretariat, which includes uh, First Nations representation. Uh, and they are, they've got an action plan and in collaboration with First Nations, they're determining what their priorities are and which. Which legislations they're looking at, so we've been told that the Local Government Act. Uh, hasn't been, it's not actioned currently. But sometime within the next five to seven years, they'll be looking at the Local Government Act and making it comply with Undrip. So that'll be interesting, and it's something that I think, you know, and I think I noted that as a potential threat. Uh, that is going to happen and we need to be ready for it. Um, and just because it hasn't happened yet doesn't mean that we can't start reviewing that. Um, C O um, Dalton. Uh, had talked about what the uh, Comox Valley Regional District was doing, there's a number of local governments that are. Um, taking actions on Undrip and the T R C calls to action, one of the things that we could potentially look at doing would be a jurisdictional scan. So that, I mean, I've got a ton of reports, but I could put a report together that actually lays out what some other regional districts are doing around B C. Um, City of Vancouver just recently uh. Uh, created an Undrip strategy, uh, I'm a little hesitant to recommend that because they have. I know probably at least ten people working in a department and they have pre-existing relationships. Uh, and they did it in a period of about eighteen months, which just boggles my mind. Um, but it's, it's a very substantial document and certainly worthy of read. Um, but the Comox Valley Regional District, um, as C O Dalton said, they, they took a planning to plan. Approach, um, and so they created, they prioritized indigenous relations in twenty nineteen. In January of twenty twenty, they finalized a framework that identified their vision. Some key objectives and some key actions, their three key actions were to develop policy, strengthen relationships and support learning. Then they developed an implementation plan, the following year they drafted a statement of reconciliation. Um, they conducted an assessment of what their organ- where their organization was. And then they actually did invite Comox First Nation to be a part of that process. Uh, Comox Nation declined. Um, the sense that I got from reading the report that was kind of a capacity thing, but then also. You know, related to what Director Richmond said, we have a lot of work to do internally that we can do on our own. Um, and then basically what they were told by Comox Nation is once you have the plan, let's get together again. And we can take a look at it, we can offer feedback, it's a draft plan, we can work on it together and then. From there, start doing more stuff together, so that's kind of, it took them a few years to get to that point. And now they're in the process of working with Comox Nation to develop a plan. Um, so anyways, there's, there's lots of uh, things that we could be doing, but I agree, like. I think it, one of the things that came out in the stat survey was there is an interest in learning about the specific cultural. Um, cultural information of the, of the nations, like Liwatt Nations, Statlium Nations, learning about all the sort of nuances and complexities and things. And of course, we would need them to uh, provide that type of learning to us. Um, and, and they are interested in developing those curriculum, uh, maybe there's. Uh, resources that we could provide to support the development of the curriculum. Um, but then in terms of Undrip and the T R C calls to action and colonization in Canada in general terms and. You know, the Supreme Court of Canada decisions over the years and what's the doctrine of discovery, like we don't actually need to. That's learning we can do on our own. Um, so, yeah. Thank you. Yes, and Director Compton and Director. Wait, no, Jack?
Yep, thanks, uh, Lilwatt have developed a curriculum that I think they've. Given or, 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 um, or are using the Whistler Institute to help. Um, share, so reaching out to them for that, I mean, I know it's just Lilwatt is not all. Of the Statlium, but it would be worth, I, I think, reaching out to them for that curriculum.
Thank you. Uh, and just to build on that too, i- i- I, 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 I think it might actually be happening this week, the Pemberton Chamber of Commerce. Had put together a day-long workshop uh, of that curriculum with Liwatt Nation that was, that they were making available. To businesses and community members in Pemberton, um, my understanding of that uh, curriculum is that it's a two-day program. So it's, again, it's a significant commitment um, to, to do that. Um, and, uh, but yeah, I mean, stuff like that would be great to, to, to have available for staff and, and the board as well. But two days is, it's a, it's a big ask for people. Are you done, Jack?
Yes, Chair, thank you very much.
I wouldn't hate to cut you off, alright, Director Rainbow.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts have been bouncing around here, but I, I've been on this board now for over eight years. I was trying to think, has this ever been a time when we had um, a presentation from the First Nations group, and I can't think of one. And, and I just wondered if that's something we could keep in mind, you know, that it, it is. Not to go and try to create and artificially create an opportunity, but um. Just be open to that, uh, us, maybe we could initiate it and, and invite it, if, if there's some, some uh. Good reason we thought for somebody to come and present to us. Yeah, we, we, we've sat around and talked about First Nations lots of times here, but there may be. I'll leave that with you, if there's, be open to that kind of opportunity, the other, the other thing that I was thinking of was that. And I can't remember the last time we met, but we had a transit committee. And on that transit committee, we had a representative from the Squamish and from the Lilwatt Nations, which I thought was really important because. They, they need to be involved in that, in those discussions, and one of the, the obstacles we, we came up against was. The fact that we, if, if we're going to do anything in terms of taxation, we, we have the ability to tax and, you know, municipally and. In our rural areas, but um, that, that same opportunity is not there for, for the nation, so how do we deal with that? And that's still a question, it's there, we, we need to involve this, this, they have a critical interest in, in transit. And um, that, that, there are those, those barriers because of, because of the um, legislation and so on. You know, we are still interested in transit, we haven't had a meeting for a long time, but maybe that's something concrete that we need to pick up. And, and work with, and it will take some advocacy with the, not just the provincial government, I think the federal government as well. There, there, there is an example in, in the north, I know, um, where the federal government. Contributed to a local transit term service through, you know, through the um, the, the nations there. So I just sort of toss that out, that's, that's something that's sort of sitting there, is, and nothing's happening with at the moment, um. Presumably, we will pick that up again at some point, and, and that to me is a, um. A, a good opportunity to do something that fits right into reconciliation.
And I, I recently had a request from um, Vera Casper, Shalat Development Corporation. Rod Louis would like to present to the board about what they are doing in terms of development uh, with. Housing, working with Hydro because of all the workers that are gonna be coming in for the upgrades to the. Uh, dams and infrastructure that hi- so, so they were sort of floating that idea that they would like to present to us, and so maybe we could. Welcome them and encourage that. Yes.
Could I say, if we do, I'd like to do it in a format that's not sort of, you've got five minutes and then five minutes of questions, I, I. Like to have it a little more sort of open than, than that, I don't know how we do that, but.
I just wanted to flag that that is, that's one of the things that I put in as a threat, or maybe it was a weakness, but deeply entrenched colonial processes.
Yes.
Right, like you're talking about, you're talking about transit and how we have these structural barriers to collaboration. And similarly, just with the way we do meetings and things, we have this, we, you know, the Roberts Rules and says we do them a certain way and it doesn't necessarily work for other. Cultures, and so how do we sort of overcome those structural barriers to actually create um, spaces. That are actually inclusive and where people can come to the table as equals and actually have reciprocal relationships. Uh, Lauren, I do it under your last name, Greenlaw. Go ahead.
Um, I'm, you know, I'm still pretty new to all this stuff, so I, I'm not sure how this. Comment actually fits in with this conversation, well, one of the things that really speaks volumes to me. Is that every time we talk about indigenous rights and the act, the acts that apply to indigenous peoples were effectively. Forced to use a racial slur. Um, and that is deeply rooted in colonialism and frankly, straight ironic ignorance. And uh, and how do we open up that conversation around language and the importance of language and. Like the interconnectivity of culture and language in government. Um, is something that I think about a lot, and on a municipal level, why do we have to call the mayor your worship?
Do you?
Oh, you can't, you don't have to, you can call them the mayor, the chair or your worship, but that's one of the legally. That's one of their titles, and I think that, like, I just wonder how, how we can kind of start picking away. From the colonialism even within our governmental structure and language. And removing that, I don't know if that's an appropriate comment.
Language man.
It really does, yeah.
I, I, I could riff on that for, for a long time. You know, but even just, just to pick that up, you know, chief administrative officer. Um, you know, like we, we do have a lot of terms.
Part stakeholder result, yeah.
Yeah, oh, the word stakeholder is very offensive and we've started now trying to um, just get away. um, just get away, get away from using the, this is very early days, but not using the term stakeholder, but certainly not using the word stakeholder with First Nations. Um, rights holders. And that's, and even that's probably not a hundred percent appropriate, but um, you know, it's, it's evolving. And yeah, it's interesting too, when the, writing the report and, you know, the Indian Act, like you were saying, and um, you know, and I, the Aboriginal, like all the words are, they're changing, um, and they are uncomfortable now. And um, and I think that's good. That it's uncomfortable and we don't have the answers yet, but I think it's good to have the conversation, like I said. Um, and uh, I think the United Nations actually declared that this is the decade of indigenous languages. So maybe that fits in there somewhere too.
Thank you. And I, I see that you did note that the word reconciliation is problematic and that was confirmed for us at the workshop that we attended with Norm Lee Sean, you know. So. Uh, Director DeMare, uh, and Director Mack, do you like to say anything?
No, I, I just think we need to uh, to engage as much as possible with, with everybody, like all the different groups, um, and just be respectful, like, language is language, but if you look at their structures in their offices, they use all those same colonial designations for all their C O, head of works, all that stuff. So, yeah, it's just, I think it's a, a work in progress.
Director DeMare. And then Director Richmond, thank you.
Just on the training piece, saying that we only have a couple thousand dollars that we can use. We've got funds in general select that we could use. If, if the other three electoral area directors are agreement, because it benefits everybody. Not only us, but the public also. And our indigenous neighbors. So, and we got a fair amount. I think we got thirty, thirty-two thousand. Something we could bring to the uh, electoral area directors meeting the next meeting, which is actually next week.
Could we make a note of that, um, to add that to the?
We need to know what, what we, what's required.
Yeah.
Right.
Director Chair, great idea. Not for next week, I would suggest, but I think we want to, we want to look at
Yes.
at where we are in terms of what a training model would look like and then look at budget sources, but that will definitely add that if it's.
Thank you.
There's money available, yeah.
Uh, Director Richmond.
Um, I think my comments have been somewhat covered, but you know, I was responsible to, to Director Rainbow, you know, we, we, when we went through the trans- regional transit, found out that First Nations cannot be on commissions. And then we put that resolution forward to change that. I think we even had some ministers meetings on it, but um, you know, I, it's, I was trying to find which one is. I think it's number forty-seven on the T R C calls to action, which is calling on all levels of government uh, to reform the laws and the language within the laws, um, to, to more reflect or in, in an effort to decolonize. And, and I, you know, whether it's being able to sit on commissions, whether, whether it's the title of the Indian Act or what's in within the Indian Act, all those things, you know, that's one of the very uh, one of the foremost calls to action is for all levels of government to change that legislation, to change, um, yeah, to, to dig deeper in that. So, you know, again, we talked about undrip and, and then learning what we can do to, to um, implement aspects, if not all of undrip. We've talked about training and all that. Uh, what can we influence at our level? And then what can we advocate for at higher levels of government to, to make some of these changes that were being called upon to do? So, I think that would be something else I'd like to see in a future workshop is what is some of that legislation that we would like to look at and how we can impact it?
And I'd like to bring forward this report and, and the actions in the listing because it's such good work for us to, to keep on developing.
I think, yeah, it's a good point to try to identify what are, what are things that we can do. There are things that we probably should be aware of that we can't have any effect on. You know, like one summer, I, I spent a lot of time in Matasque Prison. Um, just twice a week visiting, but um, I'm, I'm working with, with, with prisoners and assist, helping them prepare resumes and public speaking and things like that. And, and I, I didn't know going in there more than eighty percent of those guys in the prison were, were First Nations people. Um, and the stories that, you know, it was a smack between the eyes in terms of learning about their experiences and so on. And, and I, and I, I just remember one of the, one of the guys that I worked with, uh, he, he said to me, um, when, when you, when you go, when you go and see Indians, he said, well, you must learn, he said, you go in there and sit and listen. And, and that, that was really good advice. Not something that really occurred to me before, because I'm, I'm more like the person that goes in and starts yapping away. Um, and I found that it, it, yes, it was useful to keep my mouth shut and listen to what they had to say. But we can't, you know, that thing about the prison, we, we can't change that. And yes, we, we can't take on some sort of role to try and reduce the number of First Nations people in prisons. Obviously, of course not. But just to be aware of it and that, that's sort of the backdrop. So when we talk about undrip and calls to action and things like that, we, we're talking about generational project. We're, we're not talking, maybe multi-generational project. We're not going to change those kinds of societal things in, in our, we need to be aware that they're there.
Director Stoner.
Thank you, Director Chair. Just uh, to, I think, reiterate my comments and respond to some of C O Dalton's questions. Um, I think for me, the key pieces moving forward are that budget discussion. Um, the training component that I already mentioned, but I, I'm also really comfortable with the direction of planning for a plan. Building on Director Richmond's comments of like doing that more detailed analysis of where can we take steps to decolonize, decolonize our processes, our policies, and highlighting where our role is as advocates. Um, and so I think that is for me like the, the clearest way forward here. Um, and I think in advance of whatever next workshop might look like, this report from Women Transforming Cities is really extra phenomenal. Um, and it does a lot of that work for us, I think. So we can uh, hopefully direct the board to read that and any other reports that Jeanette wants to bring to our attention as to help inform that conversation, really understand the scope of where our sphere of influence might be and our role in taking action.
I think a plan to plan is, is not a bad place to be. I think we can own that. And I think it'll allow us to be uh, really uh, direct and clear on what, what we are going to do. Which I think is what I would like to see.
Thank you. Do we need any sort of emotion to these, these effects or is it enough general direction?
I'm not sure. Do we need a, a motion to receive for that?
Oh, a motion to receive, definitely.
Okay.
But I just wondered if you wanted any more specific wording or I think we're all nodding and understanding kind of where we're at.
Yeah.
And is that adequate? Okay. Do you want a motion to like actually the strategic planning session about this or should it come back with?
Yeah, I think good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're ready to do that, definitely. So along the lines of the planning for the plan, um, another, a motion to have the strategic planning.
Motion that staff bring back to strategic planning exercise for indigenous relations at a future committee of the whole meeting.
And some budget discussion as well related to that.
Yeah, I, I, I might suggest something more general and just say that, that staff incorporate these comments. Or comments into ongoing strategic planning priority setting exercises.
Right, so with that, is that recorded? And uh, second, the, the Director Mack, thank you. Does anyone oppose? Okay, seeing them, motion carried. Thank you.
Just what I did.
Uh, motion to receive this report is also needed, right? Yes. Okay, Director Rainbow.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did attend that um, that workshop at U B C M last year. That was late, that, that group did. It was excellent. We had a lot of, a lot of back and forth conversations and then we had, there was lots of time for discussion with the audience. It was excellent.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Director Rainbow will proceed and I don't believe that any dangers are as thoughtful as Women Transforming Cities. Okay, so they can, that motion is carried. Uh, Chair, the verbal update. We'll jump into later, but then the decision on late business. So it's in the tier. So then we need motion to. Very interesting. Thank you. For the committee of the whole.
Oh.
Right. So we're going to adjourn the committee of the whole and take a seven-minute break. So that was good.
I don't make the motion, John. I did the.
Absolutely, Jim. I don't give to it. Way to let it be.
Okay.
You're just going to keep more than that. To applaud Jeanette, thank you.
All the question, seeing none opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Yeah, we could, we'll come back to order from that short recess. Uh, yesterday we left ten point one to be picked up today. And so that's a round table. And I think, um, let's try and stay within two minutes. Salads for fifty, drag for two. Partly so that we have energy and time for the next exercise, but we'll have lots of dialogue. So we'll start with Director Stoner, please.
Oh, gosh. Uh, what else going on in Skomish? We just received uh, an updated housing strategy or housing supply. I can't remember what we even call it. Housing needs assessment. Thank you. That one. Don't be surprised to know that it looks like we need to build a lot more housing in a very short amount of time. Uh, the numbers in it are a little bit terrifying, but at least gives us a bit of a roadmap of what it is uh, that we need. Um, and uh, a few exciting forthcoming things in Skomish. We're doing an e-bike expo on June first. Sorry, June third, uh, showcase different types of e-bikes and how people are getting around town. And then the reuse affair is coming up on June tenth, which is always exciting in our community. Oh, and we have adopted uh, or endorsed Council's uh, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six strategic plan. So we'll bring hard copies for all of you next time around.
Do you want to read them? Would you like to add something to that? Then the updates.
Oh, sorry, no, um.
There's probably a million things that I missed.
Well, we've been getting updates from like Fortis and Wood Fiber, but I think you guys have as well, so. We're doing a stop.
Uh, Pemberton.
Uh, lots going on. Maybe just in the spirit of our last conversation, I'll point towards one of the big conversations we're having, having, which is uh, regarding the Nukma development, which is on the bench lands right above our heads here on the hillside. And that was a crown grant that uh, Lewat Nation applied for and, and retained ownership of that whole development area. It's an area that was uh, designated in our previous O C P review as a future growth node, um, recognizing that Pemberton, Bud Plain, all that stuff. We have to, we have limited growth nodes and that was one of the main ones identified years ago in the O C P. Um, it's a series of benches that works its way up the hill. A build out will be looking at four hundred and fifty units up on that hillside. Uh, so it's a substantial development, uh, one that we're trying to be very, very thoughtful about. Um, because it's a whole new neighborhood, so we have a great opportunity to shape it. Accordingly, we did a workshop, a four-hour workshop on it this past week. One of, one of the number ones that we're going to be doing. Um, there's been uh, different levels of engagement with the community. There's concern around it, around traffic that is going to drive into there. Um, you know, a number of concerns, um, and things to address. Um, we're currently doing our O C P review, so the fact that it's happening at the same time, we're doing the sub-area plan. And similarly, we got the waterfront while you were doing your O C P review. So we're doing a sub-area plan for that area that will speak to everything from housing diversity to phasing to active transportation to all that stuff um, that we want to work through. Um, and it's going to be informed by the O C P process. It's going to be informed by the values that are emerging through the O C P process. Um, and it's going to be a lot of work and we really want to get it right. And there's a whole other element. You know, this is a development that would, that has council and the community, we, we definitely want to get right. And we're working uh, on an extension with Lewat Nation on this because it's Lewat Nation, Lewat Nation Business Enterprises, one of our main partners. And so it adds a whole other element that ties into some of our previous discussions. So it's a fascinating, um, challenging process we're going through to, to figure out how best to, to, to make that happen. Um, I'm confident in the process we've engaged in though. I think we're approaching it well. And yeah, it's pretty exciting and very interesting.
Thank you. I do not see Director Compton, Director Mack.
Um, here he is. He is obviously all the farms are in full swing at the moment. From one acre organic farms to multi-hundred acre farms. So that's really exciting. Um, Ponderosa Development uh, subdivision up on the High Line. Uh, they're doing their annual get-together on first week of June to do some more work for fire uh, safety, uh, fire smart. Um, they are an amazing group of people. They've done wonderful work on, on their community. It's, it's amazing. And they just, they got a plan. They just, they're very, very diligent. So um, I was going to mention to Mark and our fire chief, they need to go up there and take a tour of the area and because I think they could be used as a poster child for our whole regional district. They do nice work. So anyways, um, other than that, it's just busy. Lots of campers on the weekend, obviously. Um, and as usual, it rained on the last day, so and it toned everything down. Everybody went home. So it's good.
Thank you.
Uh, I've got a number of highlights. Uh, number one is that we're working, well, specifically me, but I'm working with B C Hydro to see if the community liaison committee could be initiated to include co-chairs. Not for the, the Joy Dam project. And one of the things I've mentioned to B C Hydro is that we do not want that project to cause divisiveness in our community. We've had divisiveness in the past and uh, we're really working hard to eliminate that. And I definitely don't want this project to create that. We had the free structural protection course by B C Wafer Service. Uh, we had a full complement. There was twenty-five seats available and, and uh, it was performed over two days. First day was in class. The second day was on the ground, actually doing it. Putting sprinklers on properties, on the, uh, structures, different types of structures. It went really well. Dalemore Earth Site, uh, last weekend had its grand opening. We had Lydia, Lydia Koots from Hope Mountain Blackberry Committee uh, come with uh, another Lydia Coots from Oak Mountain Black Bear Committee come with another volunteer and they did a bear exhibit and kids bear training. We also had one-on-one air spray training with inert canisters. And the B R C A last year sold seventy-five canisters. Produced prices and this year so far, really good start with thirty-six being sold. We have a lot of new property owners and visitors and, and one of the things we really promote is bear safety. And having air spray available. And split rock environmental. Last year, we got native foliage and trees. And we sold them at, at the opening of the Haremar site and did it again this year, even more varieties. And we even had live background music on the stage.
You weren't singing, were you?
No. And we got local and it does a really good job. And it worked out well. The Gun Lake Fire Protection Society had a three alarm brunch as a fundraiser. And if you remember yesterday, that little, that first image that that was, that was presented by Maude, that was part of that. And using the fundraiser for, for a new fire truck. And at that, we also had the Fire Smart Preparedness Day information and trying to get people to sign up for Fire Smart assessments. And last but not least, we actually had a wine tasting event on Saturday night last weekend. That's the first time we've ever, I've ever seen it. And that was held, that was done by a local entrepreneur and it was at the Goldbridge Community. Sold out, sixty seats or.
First time you've done wine tasting?
We'll move along. You talked about that over lunch.
Just share if you keep an eye, Jack's trying to get back in.
Okay, I'll watch him into a computer screen, but thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you very much, Director. No, I don't see it. Okay.
Okay, I'll make mine really quick. Delton Park Upgrade Project is now complete, so that's right by our museum. And my vision is to come around that corner by the museum and see that as a gateway to our downtown core. And I've been working on this project for about four years now and we just got the first step kind of done, so. The project included the installation of overhead festive lighting, so oh my gosh, we've got some sparkle in lowland, so that, that really makes me, me happy. The second part of the project was a dedicated flag pole for the Stoutland Nation, so we have now three flag poles. We have one for the Canadian flag, one that holds the B C flag. It's interchangeable with the pride flag or, or whatever other flag that we want to, to put up. And the third will be, like I said, a dedicated flag pole for the Stoutland Nation. And if we make that kind of the gateway that, that really stands out to me. We also incorporated a water fountain with a bottle fill station and a modern and accessible washroom facility that can be used by the park. So we have a lot of the buses coming in there. They stop right there or we're going to move the visitor center back there, but they always stop there anyways. We go to our local bakery and we just, like I said, that's a beautiful park and we just really want to make that as kind of our gateway. And we had that funding in part by the Canada Community Fund. They supplied just over ninety-two thousand. And the S L R D providing twenty thousand of funding from Area Dean Director Vivian Birch Jones. But yeah, so that's our, that's our main thing that's going on right now. Thanks.
Thank you. And I see, if you don't mind, I'll go to Jack while he's online.
Yeah, please.
Director Compton, couple of minutes from Whistler.
Jack comes before me, for sure.
Jack's before.
Yeah.
Tony.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to share. We've closed for skiing for the year, so that is a big day in our town, is Gaper Day. Which is the last day on the ski hill and everybody dresses up and has a lot of fun, but there was very little snow to ski and it was cold and wet. And so it was a sort of subdued Gaper Day and, and mountain biking is back. It's going to be a very congested summer for us as we're doing a big renovation of Rainbow Park. So Rainbow Park will be closed. With Sir Blackcomb switching out the Fitzsimmons chair in the village, which is going to constrain the base of the hill. And there's a number of large infrastructure projects that are happening as well. So it's going to be a summer of we'll be, our, our summer will be focused at the Armadew on, on sort of managing those impacts and trying to ensure that people still have a great time in our community. We're just rolling out the sessions scenarios to our community and the Whister Sessions was a post that we went through a number of community members. Or future, you know, future realities in our community, four things that could happen. Or ways that Whister could grow over the next thirty years. So it wasn't, they weren't sort of imagining scenarios of what we would like to have happen, but what could? So that when some of those future scenarios come into view, we, we can recognize them and we can plan accordingly. So today, those Whister Sessions scenarios, public engagement processes are happening, which will be really interesting to hear what our community has to say about them. There's video that's been developed. There's a couple, there's, there's a booklet that's available and you're welcome to have a look if you have interest at Whister Sessions scenarios on the internet. We have had a number of housing-related policy pieces come through. We are intending to be finished at the second phase of Checkamas Crossing by the end of this term, which is a pretty big target for us, but we are enthusiastic about that. As you know, we have had two new senior staff start in the last month and they're really starting to settle in and I think do great work for our community and really it, it happens much quicker than it ever did before. I think winter becomes summer and all of a sudden, all the summer visitors are in our community, so it's very busy right now. Thanks for the opportunity. Taco, Whistler.
Thank you, Director Compton. Director Rainbow.
Okay, we're going to do a quick spin around Area D. I start with, I had a meeting with Staff Sergeant Bradley last week and pleased to hear that he is pushing for more policing in rural areas and need to, a few statistics from me to move that forward, but that is, is welcome. Britannia Beach, the museum is celebrating the hundredth anniversary of that big monstrous building that you all see as you drive down the highway. They're, they're having a gala next week, next week, to celebrate that, that event. The Upper Squamish Valley, you, you will know that there's been a fire where the location of the fire was beyond the residential area and up to Forest Service Road, but it was, it was worrying in that it needed to be contained because there's always that, that worry will come down into and affect the people living there. So in response to the fire, they, they've been out with their their little volunteer fire crew and practicing and making sure that they're ready to do anything they can if if there is a recurrence of a fire in, in the residential area of the valley, as that was a couple of years ago. Let's see. Paradise Valley, further conversations about the, the bridge, the road, the See the Sky Trail. They are very happy that we, we took a crew out there to see O Dalton and Omar Bud and Alastair and Edward Wiki and myself. We went out, took a look at the road and tried to assess if there is anything we can do to, to assist at this time and they were very happy that, that we went and looked at it. So they'd be even happier if we actually do something, you know, you'd say about that. One, there's that, there, three, four, five. Pinecrest Lake. Black Tusk and Pinecrest, but each is a strategic house, so each is its own entity. But they share the lake. And it's a really strange situation in that one half of the lake, which is in Pinecrest, Pinecrest owns the, their, the land under the lake. On the other side, the Black Tusk side, they have the their, their property comes to, to the edge of the lake and then the, under the lake is owned by the province, so I don't. It poses some problems from time to time, but anyway, they have formed, or they did form a few years ago a society that, that sole purpose is, is to look after the lake and, and they do that very effectively. But the problem right now is that somebody decided that they didn't want their goldfish, so they chucked them in the lake and they're problematic. That's and they're building, I don't remember, they, they had a little sort of a community space on the shores of the lake, which was actually, it's actually in Black Tusk, but was shared by both communities. And it burned down. And they're rebuilding and it's not very, not finished yet, but it looks, it's a really interesting looking building. The glass front of looking the lake and it's, it's very nice. That's happening. Number five, number six, Furry Creek. The Community Association had their A G M tonight. And on the agenda is Find Peace and they are going to be talking about the phase one of the development. And my understanding is, I haven't talked to them extensively about this, but my understanding is that they're in the process of finalizing the, the plans for the completion of all of this landing. I'm not quite sure what their connection is with, with our staff at the moment. I don't know if they've actually come and applied for permits. But they're, they're telling me that it's, that development is imminent. And that will be closely followed by the construction of the fire hall. And finally, not specifically Area D, but the, the See the Sky Hospice, which is located right at the Squamish Hospital. I'm on their art committee and I've been tasked with the given the task of finding out if the person that carved the totem pole for the new Foundry Building would do a poll for the hospice, whatever cost and, you know, they, they, our, our we, we acquired some really nice art that is from Squamish artists for, for inside the building. But we thought it would be good to have a welcoming poll outside because, you know, that, that facility, it is See the Sky Hospice, it's not just a Squamish hospice. And we have people there from up as far as the Stasi all the way through. And we, we certainly have a, a good representation of First Nations people that, that use it. And so we want to have, we want to make sure that we are so catering, that's not the right word, but aware and, and having art that they would appreciate. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Was just looking at my notes and I attended, did you go to that honor gathering that the Legion hosted? It was definitely some, yes, yeah, that was not that long ago.
No.
It seems like it was a long time ago. But all the, all the emergency support services, search and rescue and all our fire guys, including our guys from the reserves and so on, we're all there at the brewery and the, the group, this group, which is, I believe, connected to all the Legions have a facility in Vancouver where those sort of critical support workers can stay if they have family in hospitals. And they also have a ranch for recovery in Ashcroft for people who have like post-traumatic stress and so forth. I mean, and these injuries are pretty common in these kind of professions and so that was, you know, considering I've been in the hospital business and connected to health, this was a kind of a new service for, for me to learn about. And so it was kind of neat that everybody got together and it was a really, it was a really positive event and a lot of I managed to get in a couple of photos, so. I just, it was heartwarming. Yeah, yeah. And of course, we've had a couple of decolonization workshops. We talked about those and Jody Wilson-Rabel was at the last one signing, giving away copies of her book. She was apparently a wonderful speaker, no doubt. Our farmer's market is hopping. It's just beautiful. And a really neat new initiative and I'm really pleased because I've provided support to all three organizations from Area D. Okumook Farm up on the Ticket Reserve has a massive farm or, or growing operation going on vegetables and fruits and things. There's cooking, writing, in laps, they're getting a lot of guidance from a little bit of agriculture included. And then they're also using the hub as a showcase. So it's like, this is a really talented, strong complementary partnership. And, you know, we have so, like, we need to combine resources in our little community. So this is pretty exciting, that one. You'll probably hear more about it. And I signed on to enjoy the B C Municipal Climate Leadership Council. It's just been partially to one meeting. Now, it says municipal, but nobody's kicked me out because I'm a so far, so good. I think I'll just stop right there. I attended the Elris A G M, I tend to, where there's some funding involved, I try to go to the annual general meetings of the groups and that, that's you know, at a minimum sort of the level of participation. Yeah. So. So now may we move, we don't have to accept those reports. Number sixteen then, recommendations. Okay. So the recommendations from our community of the whole meeting are that staff incorporate board comments into future board strategic planning sessions. Okay, moved. Do we move it again? Yes. Okay, seconded by Director Rainbow. Is there anyone opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Then it says that they closed for so a motion to go back and close meetings. Director Stoner, directed by Director Rainbow. Closing doors, maybe we should open the windows, is it like getting pretty warm stuff in? Just a short recess.
A short recess.